Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven PM on July the twenty-fourth. This is a regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education. We'll now bring the meeting to order and pledge allegiance to the flag led by me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, Ms. Hines. Roll call, please.
Mr. Albrecht.
I'm here.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. May, excused. Mr. Neal.
Here.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
President Cox.
Present.
Let the record show six, zero, one absent.
Thank you, Mel. One oh two point two four is citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting reserved for citizens wishing to address the board on items which appear on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to one oh three point two four, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion on consent?
So moved.
And support.
A motion by Weaver, support by Neal. Is there discussion? Mr. Albrecht?
President Cox, under Roman numeral two, human resource items, I move that item C and DB table for further consideration.
Is there a maker of the motion or the supporter of the motion wish to restate their motion exclusive of those items?
No.
You want to keep it, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Hines?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
No.
And Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, let's see, is it five, one?
Right. Next item is one oh four point two four, Board of Education Committee Reports. We did have a finance committee. However, Ms. May, the treasurer, is not here to make a report. Ms. Luanne, do you have a report regarding finance? Or would you like to move on to the business items?
I would like to move on to the business items.
Okay.
I mean, I, I guess I do have a report, but I was gonna wait until we got to that part of talking about the Fire Academy.
Sure, sure, you can wait.
Okay.
We'll wait. Okay, we'll bypass the finance committee report and move on to one oh five point two four, which is review and approval of business service items. Ms. Claire?
Okay, I'm requesting board approval to purchase one year of licensing from Modell Manager for iOS and Mac OS third recommendation, Seth Lenzel, Director of Technology. This service will allow remote management of our iPad and Apple computer fleets. If approved, this purchase will not exceed twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and will be charged to the general fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Neal, support by Weaver. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Really Great Reading Phonics Program per the recommendation of Kil- Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. The request is based on a request from the Literacy Task Force to embed this program into our buildings. If approved, this purchase will not exceed three hundred and fifty thousand and will be charged to various grants during the three-year period.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support by Mr. Weaver. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries, six, zero.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Springboard Collaborative per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Springboard is a new program tailored around after-school tutoring that is planned, packaged, and focused on reading. There's also a parent component included. We have a partial donor to assist with the funding of this program. If approved, the cost to the district will not exceed thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support by Mr. Neal. Discussion?
Just a question.
Mr. Neal?
Um, he says partially funded, someone's donated something?
Yes.
And who is it?
Uh, it's the bomber group has offset and split the cost with us.
Oh, nice. Okay, thank you.
I guess everyone was looking over at Vic. Do we vote on that?
Is there a motion?
So we have Albrecht and Neal.
Yeah, and discussion, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Albrecht? Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Let the record show six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Wonder Works per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Wonder Works is a supplemental program that connects with our current ELA program. This will be utilized for our Tier Three and Tier Four instruction and will give support to our most at-risk learners. If approved, this purchase will not exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Albrecht?
Support.
Support by Ms. Abney Mitchell. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
I'm a, I am requesting board approval to purchase Studies Weekly Subscription per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Studies Weekly is a weekly subscription to support social studies learning for our K through five students. If approved, this purchase will not exceed twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Weaver?
Support.
Support by Neal. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase the Atlas Online Platform per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, I'm sorry, Director of State and Federal Grants. Atlas is an online platform for all of our pacing guides, unit plans, and other options, so teachers have one commonplace to reference. This platform will also allow parents to have online access. If approved, this purchase will not exceed twenty-six thousand, fifty-three dollars and twenty cents and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
To Ms. Abney Mitchell, support by Albrecht. Is there discussion?
I just have a, um, question. So it says that it will be available for parents. What would that component look like? They would be able to see what their child is doing or what would it look like?
There is, oh, so there is a component that you can go on and look at the standards they're teaching and their units they're teaching and so forth for each of the classes.
Okay.
Do you mind if I add something to? You can also, uh, teachers can upload lessons to the standards and kind of connect it that way, and there can be a backdoor on that, but it gives, uh, each of the parents, especially in the summertime and stuff, to see what standards their kids are gonna go into the next year and kind of get a jump.
Okay.
It's a pretty, uh, they use it in Oakland County quite a bit. It's, it's a great curriculum warehouse.
Okay, thank you.
Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Math one eighty digital software subscription per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Math one eighty is a software program we're using for our fifth grade students, and this is a continuation into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. If approved, this purchase will not exceed a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Mitchell, support.
Hines, yes.
Is there discussion? Ms. Hines, roll call vote.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Beable Life Ready Literacy Software for our middle school students per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Beable is currently being utilized in our elementary buildings, and this will expand the utilization to our middle school buildings. If approved, the purchase will not exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and will be charged to grant funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines, support by Mr. Albrecht. Discussion? Ms. Hines, roll call vote.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Let's see, Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
And...
President?
President Cox?
Yes.
They got it kind of weird. I got the names dou- no, they got names doubled on here. It's kind of strange. The names are twice. Think about it. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. Motion carries, six, zero.
I am requesting board approval to purchase Read one eighty Stage B subscription for our sixth grade students per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. The purchase will allow our district to implement the full one eighty model and allow us to purchase print materials for both teachers and students. If approved, the purchase will not exceed two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and one eighty-six cents and will be charged to grant funding.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Albrecht, support by?
Support.
Mr. Neal, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Amira Suite Licensing, which is a reading platform per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Currently, this reading platform is being utilized in our first through fifth grades, and this will be a continuation into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. If approved, this purchase will not exceed eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and will be charged to grant funding.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support by Abney Mitchell. Is there discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Six, zero. Motion carries.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase Amplify Science per the recommendation of Kim Paul Leckowitz, Director of State and Federal Grants. Amplify Science provides both licensing and kits and will be used for elementary science programs. If approved, this purchase will not exceed a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents and will be charged to grant funding for the first year. If there is a need for additional years, the funding will come from the general fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Abney Mitchell. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
And Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
Ms. Claire?
I'm requesting board approval to purchase student desks per the recommendation of Tony Spisek, Executive Director of Maintenance and Operations. We will be purchasing a total of three hundred student desks for our kindergarten through twelfth-grade classrooms. If approved, this purchase will not exceed thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and will be charged to the general fund. This price was achieved through consortium bidding and with school specialty.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hines, support?
Support.
By Mr. Neal. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, one oh six point two five, four is a review and approval of curriculum instruction and assessment items. Ms. Curry?
Good evening. I am requesting board approval for the recommendation and resolution to accept the Fire Academy. I'm sorry, the resolution is in the back of your packet. You would read that through and then vote to determine whether you will accept the, um, resolution.
Okay. The resolution reads as follows. Resolution for contingent approval of Fire Academy. Whereas the board has identified an opportunity to work with the community stakeholders for the construction of a Fire Academy on school district grounds, which will also provide space for educational activities that will positively impact the experiences of school district students. Whereas, the board supports the efforts aimed at making the Fire Academy a reality for the students of the school district and the community at large. Now therefore be it resolved that the board indicates its intent to support the Fire Academy project subject to the contingencies identified herein. One, the school district receives the results of its financial audit, expected in October of twenty-twenty-three, reflecting the absence of any unexpected financial indicators. And two, the school district receives the Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funding Award Letter and Distribution Timeline from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Community Planning and Development, and the Office of Economic Development Congressional Grants Division. Be it further resolved that upon satisfaction of the above noted contingencies, the board is prepared to approve further action and resources aimed at the realization of the Fire Academy. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall not be construed to conflict with any existing Michigan or federal law. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Uh huh.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support by Ms. Hines. Discussion?
I, I have some-
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I have some discussion. Um, we talked about this in our finance committee meeting. And, um, as I can recall, Dr. Dignan was gonna get us a, a detail about how much the Wayne Westland Schools was paying and how much, um, Westland was paying for that. And to, if I remember correctly, he was gonna send it to all the board members. And, um, for that reason that, um, that we didn't receive that, I don't know if you guys received it. I didn't receive it.
No, I, we haven't received it, nor did I, nor did I expect at this juncture. Frankly, I don't know if you want me to answer the question, but at this juncture, to identify the numbers that each of the parties would be responsible for, it just simply isn't possible. As the, one of the contingencies mentioned, we don't even know if we're going to receive a letter awarding us these funds at this point. And, but what we're doing is, if there is to be a relationship, it has to start at some point.
Absolutely.
And the starting point has to be, the, the legislative authorities representing the community and the school district need to agree in, in a public forum that this is a road we want to go down.
Okay.
It, it may come to pass that finances don't work.
Correct.
But in order to establish what the finances are, we first have to be going down the road towards this. So the question before the board at this state, if, if I'm reading the resolution right, is there are contingencies to be worked out?
Okay.
Providing they can be worked out, are we, is it our intention to move forward? I think Vic is here on behalf of the city, uh, to say that the city's interested in moving forward. The question to the board is, does the board want to move forward?
Question.
Dr. Weaver?
So... If the funding does not become available, if we vote yes tonight, that might give the district opportunity to move forward with district funds, total district funds, rather than half and half funds. Am I correct in that?
Well, I, I'd have to say that, that you were correct. The question would be, where would the money come from?
Well, exactly. I mean-
And, and I, and frankly, I don't know. Without, without this funding, I don't think, uh, I don't think it can happen.
Uh, the only, the only concern I have is that if we give consent, then we could conceivably take money out of the general fund or whatever to pay for construction.
Well, I, I mean, could, could, could this board vote to spend money to construct? In some cases, we can, but for instance, this bond issue, that's all, that, that's all identified for what that's gonna be spent for. We couldn't spend that. And where would the, where would the money come from? I mean, if we found it, I guess we could, but-
Point of clarification, quick question. Didn't the city of Westland get seven million dollars from Senator Dana Poehke for like a fire station or something like that?
Yes, ma'am, they did.
Vic, can you come up and talk to us from the left turn?
Thank you, Vic.
That's a, uh, that's a good question.
Well, it'll, it'll probably help the board if we started from a little bit of the, the beginning point, okay? We had federal ARPA dollars, which the school district looks at as ESSER dollars, I believe is the reference, to it through the COVID funding from the federal government. The city council has allotted two point five million dollar budget for the construction of a satellite fire station at the Hawthorne Valley property site, which is a site that is about seven and a half acres of unused property that's owned by the city of Westland at this time. So that budget has been secured for the building of the fire station. Now, since the release of information from the governor's office that the city of Westland is slated to receive seven million dollars for two fire stations, and I only need two, by the way. Uh, and I'm already in the process of building one. Two fire stations as well as new EMS, uh, equipment and vehicles and basically whatever their needs are, whether it be bringing the technology to current day, uh, re-equipping, buying new rescues, looking at their life cycle and lifespan on their equipment, placing early orders with that seven million dollars. That is not presently in the budget. So the council and administration have not determined what the actual use of that seven million dollars will entail. Council has already approved the two point five million for the building of the firehouse.
Thank you, Vic. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So what, through the chairs, so what you're saying is the city has not determined to help us build this thing at this point?
That is correct.
Okay.
If I can expunge farther, though?
Sure.
Uh, the site lends itself to quite a bit of expansion. And working with your fire training academy instructors, um, Carrie and Josh, uh, it's been determined that the site will manage a future vision that they have, which will, number one, allow them to relocate. They currently have a finite space, I believe they're using over at John Glenn, and they're running out of room. That's part, kind of how this discussion started with Dr. Dignan early on, when I knew I had to build a fire station on this monster acreage of a site. The thought that we could come up to a cooperative arrangement for the use of that property. Uh, and the district, uh, received a three point five million dollar HUD, uh, grant uh, through Congresswoman Tleib's office. And that would provide the basis for funding for various programs under the Service Learning Grant, but also allow us to buy a fire apparatus training structure for not only students, but for our active firefighters as well. So it's, it's a partnership, uh, concept, uh, the use of the property. The agreement, I noticed in the resolution that it states that the district wishes to build a fire training academy on school district property. Well, presently, that property is owned by the city of Westland in its entirety. So what we would need to do is draft an in perpetuity agreement with the district, lifelong in perpetuity agreement. So that if you use district funds to build on this property and or expand it, add additional developments in the future, that would remain school district, full use, one hundred percent access. Otherwise, we'll cut the parcel in half if that becomes a major legal concern for anybody. I'm not looking to capitalize on district funds for this site. I want to create an atmosphere and an opportunity to provide regional training, expose students to active firefighter operations and interactions, uh, as well as provide the real estate and space that they need to grow and develop. So that's where the concept came from. The district has some money that they can apply to building of the training academy and provide the fire training apparatus. Future grant funding could come up with various concepts such as adding a safety village, similar to what we have, uh, toured over in Windsor, Ontario. Uh, it's an exciting opportunity for your, uh, K to sixth grade students to, to interact with. Uh, just a lot of exciting opportunity out there. So we want to provide the space at no charge to the district and give you full access and use of it through the life of, uh, for life, I guess, no other way to put it.
Thanks, Vic.
And my understanding of this resolution is we're not voting to spend not even one penny. We're voting on a concept. That's all we're voting on.
That's right.
That we would like to further involve ourselves with the concept of developing a Fire Academy with the assistance and the cooperation of the city, using city property and some city funds possibly. But the monies would be voted on at a later time. We still have to, we can't spend money without voting on it, and this is not a vote on money.
Now, this, this resolution tonight is about having this very conversation in public, so that everybody can hear what we're doing. That's what this resolution is about. The, the school district and the city, uh, aren't in any way, uh, hobbled by this agreement. It's, it's to have a discussion and to determine, uh, what we want to do. Did you want to make some comments, Dr. Dignan?
Yeah, I think Vic did a great job kind of framing it. Um, again, with this concept, one of the things was to, to build it in phases, target other grant monies down the line and create a safety village. Uh, they're expandable walls, so you can knock the walls out and add to it, um, which is very appealing. And again, the, where the property sits is kind of, uh, in a good place. We, we were hoping down the line with some of the Service Learning Grant from Representative Tleib would be used as startup money for our law enforcement academy. And then also for the fire apparatus that, uh, uh, Vic mentioned for one point one million would come out of the Service Learning Grant. And then we could build, it's almost like a Lego set, so you can build on the fire apparatus with other apparatuses that the fire department might need. Again, the space would not only be used as academy for us, but other, uh, firehouses in Wayne County and surrounding areas would be able to use the facility as well.
The, um, you know, the city of Westland has been a leader in Wayne County for, for protective services, uh, going back to when we were the first community to have advanced life support services available to our citizens. And, uh, what, what's happening here is conversation, uh, at the administrative level and at the city level has been, what can we as a school district offer, uh, our students? And what we can offer our students is training in first responders, police and fire. And Dr. Dignan has been moving forward so that if you are growing up in southeastern Michigan and you have, you would like a career as a firefighter, a paramedic, or a police officer, that the Wayne Westline Community School District would be where you would like to go to high school because of the relationships that they're building right now. Not, not just with the city of Westland, which has been a great partner for us in these discussions, but also, uh, Wayne County Community College District. So if you look back in the past and you see that the William Ford Vocational Training Center, uh, filled a need in the entire region. As a matter of fact, tonight, there were, I don't know, six or seven school districts from the region that send their school, uh, their children to our school district to be trained. That's the same kind of thing that we're trying to create here. There's going to be a lot of public money available for this kind of an endeavor because people going into, people are not going into first responder, uh, uh, careers like they used to. So it's in, so the, the state wants to encourage this, and the school districts want to encourage it. And we have a city that we've got a great relationship with, and they want to encourage it. So the question is, do we want to go down this road where, where we- Where, where we provide, you know, if you think of the student body in the Wayne Westline Community School District, who better to be police officers and firefighters? This would be a great training ground, great young people for those careers. And we'd have the opportunity that nobody else has. There isn't any school district in Wayne County that I know of that is building the kind of relationships that this school district is with, uh, the county and the state and the city.
I just, I just want to say here that I have no problem with the concept. But I want to make sure, if this has nothing to do with money right now, and that's what I've been told.
Right.
I want to make sure that, and I'm not trying to be critical at all, Vic, but I want to make sure that the city of Westland comes through, uh, with their portion of this as well.
Well.
Well, if I could respond to that, Dr. Weaver, the money has already been appropriated by city council. We've already had stakeholder meetings with the command of the fire department. We are finalizing the final, uh, planning of the site. I have architects already pulling topos, if Tony probably knows what those are, those are elevation drawings of the property. This project on the city side is moving forward. Uh, and I have a target date for completion of early 2025. So I have a dilapidated fire station now that is obsolete. There's only one fire truck in our fleet that fits into the apparatus bay. The new modern trucks are too large to fit into that particular station. So this is an absolute need for the city of Westland to upgrade its capabilities for that region of our community. The size of the site is what lends itself to the opportunity for this partnership to even exist. Uh, the real estate is free for the school districts' use if they contribute to the development of this site. We're not even going to charge a dollar. We are going to engage in an in perpetuity lifetime agreement with the district so that if they do come to a conclusion that they want to make an investment in this site, that building for classrooms and, and additional amenities that get added over time are, in essence, the property of the school district for their use. So there's not anything that the city's looking to gain here other than to develop and explore the relationship with our students and with our school district to become a full community. I've said it before, I'm gonna, this'll be the last time I say it. We have leaders on both sides that understand that without a strong community, you do not have a strong school district. And to have a strong school district, you have to have a strong community. And it's with that attitude that we're approach, Dr. Dignan and I are approaching these concepts and sharing it with the board.
Just, just as a point of clarification, when Vic says that they're moving forward, what he's saying is that they're moving forward with the construction of a new fire station. But a relationship between the school district and the city, that still is yet to be, is yet to be created by virtue of the, the first step being this resolution.
And to the chair, we should be having another bond coming up, '24, '25, is that correct, Dr. Dignan? You know, I'm on top of that.
I love it, Mel. Is there any further discussion?
Okay, I just want to also just, I, I agree with Dr. Weaver, what he said, you know, that the funding will be there. You explained it very well, and I appreciate that. And those was the questions that I had. And thank you.
Thank you.
Anymore?
Thanks, Vic, appreciate that. Is there a motion on the resolution?
I think we had one, but I'll say it again.
We had a motion in a second.
Yep. Hines, second discussion and roll call.
Roll call vote.
All right, we have Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
President Cox.
Yes.
Six, zero, motion carries.
Review and approval of human resource items, Ms. Curry?
Uh, thank you. I am requesting board approval to appoint Ms. Angela Whately as the Assistant Principal of Hicks Elementary. Ms. Whately's qualifications include a Bachelor of Science degree with a major in elementary education and a minor in mathematics from Wayne State University. She also holds a Master of Arts in Language and Literacy from Michigan State University, along with an administrative and teaching certificate. Ms. Whately brings over seven years of valuable experience, having served as a teacher, student support interventionist, and instructional coach for the Gross Point School District.
Thank you, Ms. Curry, is there a motion? Support by Mr. Neal, support by Dr. Weaver, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mel.
Mr. Aubrey.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yep.
President Cox.
Yes.
Motion carries, six, zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Whately, would you like to come up and say hello? It's quiet over at Hicks Elementary right now, but it's not going to stay that way.
That's okay, that's okay. First, um, I just wanted to thank the interview committee. I know some of you guys are here today, so I want to thank them for that opportunity. Um, and thank you to the board for this opportunity. I'm really excited to go ahead and get started. Um, I come to you, I, I was gonna say that, but you've covered everything here. I do have additional, it's eleven years of total experience through, um, Gross Point, and I used to work for Van Dyke Public Schools as well. Um, so if you don't mind, I also just, I wrote something up, but do you mind if I read it? Because I just had a little baby and I can't remember anything, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I wrote it, so I wouldn't mess it up. Um, so in addition to my experience, um, throughout my career, I advocated for equity in education, and I recognize the importance of, um, building inclusive and supportive environment for all students. My passion for growth and professional development has helped me over the years empower teachers to foster a culture of excellence in their classrooms. Um, most importantly, I value building meaningful relationships with students, staff, and families. And these relationships are the foundation of a collaborative school community. Um, and in my research that I've done and the connections that I've made so far, I know that Hicks is a place where those values align with the values that I have as an educator, and I am thrilled to be a part of the Hicks community. I'm thrilled to partner with Mrs. G and the staff and the families that are at Hicks right now and the students. And, um, I really feel like this is a place that I belong, and I'm really excited to get started. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with everybody here.
We're happy to have you, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
108.24 is superintendent's report, Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, President Cox, good evening, board. Uh, first off, I want to thank Ms. Jewel Clare for filling in, uh, this evening. We appreciate that, it was a laundry list of, uh, things you had to rattle off, so thank you very much. Um, I want to say to Ms. Whately, welcome aboard the team, and, and, and we're very grateful that you're here. Uh, your interview by far was one of the best I've ever been around. So again, just your responses were genuine, authentic, and, and again, some of the research and, and the reason that you're in education is because of kids, and that became apparent during the process. So congratulations again. I want to thank Vic Bear for being here this evening too, and, and all his work, uh, behind the scenes, just having conversations and trying to get people moving in the same direction, so we really appreciate that, Vic. Just want to talk about a couple items that we have, uh, going on. John Glenn's gonna launch a community financial credit union branch this year at John Glenn High School. That's gonna be run by our kids. They're gonna be paid, it's no different than any, uh, credit union branch that you'd walk into. Uh, they've identified the space over at John Glenn, and it's with community financial that we're gonna have this partnership. Um, again, this is something that our kids, with the, uh, grant we got a few years ago for internships, we're gonna be able to pay our students to run the branches of the credit union, so we're pretty excited about that. We just got a, uh, we're awarded a driver's ed grant through the state of Michigan for $250,000. Um, it will probably drop in October. We're planning with our lobbyists and other politicians and land scene timeline. I would imagine that we will be able to launch the summer of 2024. We want to build voice, so we're gonna set up a committee. What incentives are we gonna attach to kind of pay for segment one and two, uh, of driver's ed? This will be run through the school. It'll be incentives like good attendance and also students that participate in the internship, uh, program will, if they're in good standing, will qualify for, uh, this grant. Um, I just want a reminder, Back to School Fair, Resource Fair is on Wednesday, August 16th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the John Glenn, uh, football stadium. This was a huge success, we launched it last year. We had thousands of families that came out and enjoyed the activities. We're looking forward to even having a bigger turnout this year. Just a reminder, we're having a ribbon cutting, and I promise next, uh, board meeting, I'll have Wayne Memorial on here too. This seems like John Glenn right now is dominating. We have our Corwell Health Center opening, our ribbon cutting on Thursday, August 24th at 4:30. Um, anybody that wants to attend, Canara SVP, Jenny Johnson, our communications director. The nice thing about the, uh, adding the second health clinic is that it's a significant milestone. We have two, we have one at Adams Middle Schools, and we also have one at John Glenn High School. That gives us two, it really, on separate ends of our, our, uh, school district. Uh, we're committed to provide a healthy learning environment for students so they can thrive physically, mentally, and emotionally. The addition of this health clinic will have a positive impact on our entire community. Even though these are housed at Adams and John Glenn, any student in Wayne Westland, uh, community schools can access these clinics. So it, it's a huge, huge thing, and, and I think it speaks volumes to our, our school district. On that note, I'm gonna close, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda, 109.24, is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Any citizens wishing to address the board on, uh, issues that are not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do, do so. Anybody wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Luana?
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say welcome to Ms., um, to the new Assistant Principal, David Hicks. I am, um, a board member and I live in the city of Inkster. And it's true to my heart, and I look forward to working with you guys over there. I look forward to visiting more in the fall. And I'd like to say thank you to, um, Dr. Dignan for always looking for ways to innovate our district. Um, I was a little kind of confused about the resolution, but I can gladly say that I'm leaving today with all the answers that I did, I was confused about. Cause I know we talked about it in the finance meeting, and I'm like, how are we getting a resolution? And we didn't get the email, so I just thank you for all that you do for the district. And, um, that's all I have, enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone.
Thank you, Luana. Ms. Hines?
I'd like to say happy summer, and I'm excited about what Westland is doing, so uh, we're gonna have the Blues Brews and Barbecue coming August the 5th at 8:30 over at, uh, Central City Park. Amazing, I don't know if they're having the drone show, but that's fabulous they've had the last couple of years. Fireworks, good music, good food. Um, even like on Thursday nights, Alexander's Honor's been down at Central City Park, free jazz concerts, amazing. The park that they just had put up for the city of Westland is amazing, ADA for the children, it's beautiful. I mean, I'm really excited with these relationships that we have with the city of Westland and the school district. Um, I'm excited about these different programs with this fire academy, police academy, you know, everybody putting these resources together. Uh, mental health is a big issue, and I'm so excited about Wayne West and how we're on the forefront of making sure that our kids are taken care of physically, emotionally, spiritually, um, with the different sports. Uh, feeding our children, breakfast, lunch, dinner, you know, having transportation to get back and forth to the sports and activities. So, you know, we have a lot, and then our, our good working relationship with our current legislators. So that's really awesome, like the direction that we're moving forward. And congratulations, um, to you and your new position, and thank you today for helping us in our finances. I'm really excited about our new direction, but guys, we're gonna have an awesome year. And like I said, I can't wait to that bond, so let me know if we can get our team together, get some more money. Make our buildings, our buildings beautiful, so thank you.
Ms. Aubrey.
Uh, thank you, President Cox, congratulations, Ms. Whately. I'm sure you're gonna enjoy your time there. It's always a challenge to be an administrator, but I think you already know that. It's really good to see that we've approved continuing and adding to the digital resources we're providing for our children. Um, anything that's adaptive, that helps them where they're at in their learning is certainly critical. And knowing that we've done it for all students, including the most challenged, uh, puts it right at the top. Um, we're, we're in a different age, the day of turning the page. Uh, and everybody being in the same place at the same time is starting to go behind us. Because children need to be able to move at their pace and have success and realize and recognize that success. So they can feel good about where they're at in their learning. Um, and that'll be the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, John. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, President Cox. Ms. Polikovich spent a lot of money tonight, and, uh, I hope she gets those grants, keep coming in, all right? Uh, Mrs. Whately, uh, congratulations, welcome to the district. Um, I don't want any of, uh, my questions to be misconstrued in any way concerning the fire academy. I'm looking forward, uh, to it and, uh, looking forward to seeing more about the funding of that project. Um, looking forward to a productive school year coming up. And also, I'd like to say congratulations to, uh, my good friend Jim Anderson, who left our district and is now the superintendent and wine doctor.
Chief Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have one thing. Um, I'm just trying to draw attention to the fact that the Westland Community Foundation is sponsoring a fundraiser, uh, this Wednesday. Uh, their fundraiser is called Christmas in July, is designed to gather monies that they use for, um, uh, the students that attend Wayne Westline Schools or any student that lives in the city of Westland for scholarships. I guess they gave three scholarships last year, but yes, some of you may know, the, the foundation had gone silent for a while. They just started up again last year, and they're trying to build their coffers. All the people that work there are volunteers, all the money goes to the students. Uh, so if you're inclined to attend, it's at the Hellenic Center, uh, next, or this coming Wednesday, it's from 6:00 to 9:00. The Hellenic Center is on Joy Road, and, uh, the monies all go again to the students. And then they're asking people to bring also canned food if you, if you do attend. And they provide that or give that to the Salvation Army, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Uh, tonight, uh, as Mr. Neal sort of said, there was a lot of money spent. And as I looked at each of the line items that were presented, I thought about, uh, how historically we never would have been able to make those purchases. There, there's no way that, we couldn't even buy the curriculum, let alone all, all of these, uh, Great Reading Phonics Program, Spring Board Collaborative Program, the Purchase Works, Purchase Wonder Works Program, all of these tools, we would not have been able previously to afford our kids. But thanks to the good fortunes of, uh, recent bond, uh, issues and what have you, we're in an excellent position. And I, I'm really happy to see that because th- these kids aren't lacking in any of the tools that, that we want to use, or we're able to do it. The other thing was tonight, some members of the board, uh, didn't know a lot about the conversations that had occurred between the city and the school district. By design, we don't, we don't make phone calls, uh, between ourselves and talk about things that should be talked about here. We wait until we're here to talk about them, so if you don't have all of the details of these things, it's because all the details aren't even ironed out yet. But what there is, is recognition on behalf of the superintendent and the city that an opportunity exists here that isn't typical. We have a, uh, we have a need in our society for people to go into the career paths of law enforcement and fire, but they're not going into those career paths in spite of the fact that uh, they're very lucrative paths, you could do very well, uh, as a firefighter or as a police officer. And we would like to make that opportunity available to students in this district so that we are the clear choice for anybody wanting to go into that line of work. And, and the superintendent's been working with the city, it's true, but he's also been working with a lot of other entities, uh, the, the college in order to put this together so that while kids are going to high school, they're also getting, uh, closer to their certifications for these, for these very lucrative career paths. So it is about bringing opportunity to the students in our school district. Uh, we certainly want, uh, the fire station to be successful for the city of Westland. Uh, many of us live in the city of Westland, and even if we don't, we know that Westland responds when our neighbors are in trouble. when our neighbors are in trouble. So, so we want that, but what we're looking for is attracting people to our school district, to our community because of the resources and opportunities that exist here. And this relationship doesn't exist anywhere else that I'm aware of. So, not that, not that it exists now just because we approved this resolution, but we're, this is the direction we're thinking, this is what we're trying to build on, so. With that, uh, thank you very much for coming. It's, uh, this is what meetings are like in the summer here, Vic, it's very quiet. Does, uh, motion, chair would like a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Support by Ms. Hines, support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're adjourned.